Microphone test. Microphone test.
All right. Good morning. Welcome to the Budget Review Workshop for July 23rd. We'll begin with an invocation by Dr. Roger Pietro from First Christian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with us.
I pray for these elected leaders as they discuss budget items and the people that have gathered to participate as well. May you infuse them with discernment and wisdom and with the view of what is best for our county. We thank you for the opportunities to serve in various capacities. Lord, thank you for watching over us, for being with us in every aspect of life, especially when we need to make decisions that affect a wider group. Thank you for being with us, and I pray for these men and women making perhaps difficult decisions. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Pietro. We'll begin with the county administrators' update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I am not going to go through the PowerPoint again. I'm going to reserve that for the special meeting when we set up the tentative millage rate. So there were no changes that came out of the first budget workshop. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, and we have a number of speakers, constitutional officers, and then I have a few departments at the end, and we'll try and get through these budgets this morning.
All right. Move to the County Health Department.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm just going to briefly do a quick overview of an update of our transfer of our on-site sewage program services. And as I've mentioned to you before, you know, we're transferring our on-site sewage program over to DEP, and that's been ongoing since 2021. And we've continued to provide the services as all the county health departments throughout the state through an inter-agency agreement, and it's set to expire in July 2026. So our local responsibilities will transfer in a phased approach, and that's beginning July 1, 2024. And at the Department of Health, it's the division of our Deputy County Secretary of County Health Services that's overseeing this transfer. And the Phase 1 is what we're part of, and as I've mentioned before, it involves the panhandle. And the Phase 1 is what we're part of, and as I've mentioned before, it involves the Panhandle Counties and Marion County. Group 1 are the 16 counties that make up from Escambia County all the way to Jefferson, and this will make up DEP's Northwest District. Group 2 will, in the Phase 1, is of course Marion County. And in the Phase 1, which includes our counties, we'll continue to provide those services, even though right now, as of July 1, they officially are taking over, but they're in the process of hiring positions. So we've been told that they will not, we will still be able to provide these services, and they will not take any of our people, if any of our people are hired on by them, and you know, that they will let us continue to provide the services to the citizens until they get things in order. So, and, and they're anticipating the cutoff date to be December 31st at the end of this year. We are in the process of setting up a call between DEP, our Department of Health, and County Administrator, Mr. Hofstadt. So we're, we're still struggling on getting those dates set up, but it's going to be in the next few weeks. They will operate a different model than what we've operated, and they plan to use like multi-county service areas. And you know, with the main service area, probably most likely in our region out of Escambia County. So I don't really know what that looks like yet for our county. Maybe we'll learn more about that when we get the call set up. Uh, this is basically, as I've mentioned, and I did want to mention this right quick. These are some of our top priorities. Many of you know, you've participated in many of our events and, but for the health department, of course, we've been working very, uh, very much on the drug overdoses and implemented, you know, a program along with the police department and the county graciously with the abatement funds. And our other priorities have included mental health, obesity, disease control, and of course, safe and affordable housing. And our O chip groups are going great. We have a huge, robust participation from many, many community members and agencies. Our O chip groups actually represent over 54 agencies and over 200 persons. So just wanted to throw that in. Our funding request this year is level. We're not requesting any additional funding, and, which is 661,000, and it represents about 6.5% of our total budget. The funding that we do receive from you all goes towards primarily salaries, and that makes up salaries that support staffing and our community health improvement, our environmental public health, and our disease control. So do any of you have any questions?
Swiftly, on the, um, the transition, your staff will stay with you until they are fully staffed on, on their side.
That's what we've been told, that they will not, as long as we're making transitions, then we will have staff to, but that's if our staff does stay. I mean, that's the problem is, you know, we've had conversations with some of our staff because we do know it is going to impact a few positions that primarily work these services. But, um, you know, we can't force someone to stay. They may seek employment outside of the state or whoever, but you know, and go somewhere else. But, um, as long as they're there, yes, that, I mean, you know, and of course, our Environmental Public Health Director will probably end up, we, we may all be out there doing on-site services. But yeah, just so that everyone has the services, they're not going to like just, you know, say, okay, this date is gone. You know, they want to be set up. And we're encouraging our staff to apply for their positions because they won't experience people. So, and we do have, you know, there are now some private providers out there. So, I mean, I know of three offhand. I'm not sure if there's any more, but I know that, that we've worked closely with three private providers, so.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that update today. Thank you for keeping your budget where it is.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mr. Clerk.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Hofstadt, staff. Um, Kerry, good morning. So this is the last time I get the fun and enjoyable position to, to be in to present the clerk's budget for the coming year. I want to tell you, first tell you that I, I continue to appreciate the relationship that our office and our responsibilities have built with your office and your team, Mr. Hofstadt, the deputy administrators, and certainly all the staff that do the work related to the finances, as well as the support to the courts and the other functions that we do, official records and so forth. This year's request for FY 2425, all in for the county's portion of the funding is about a 2.3% increase over last year. It incorporates a 4% across the board COLA for staff, following, I'm following the lead of the county on how you're working through your staff compensation issues. I want to thank Kelly and the team who do the insurance. We've, we've gotten to a really good place from the 10 years ago when I started on our health insurance. Back then, we just penciled in 15% or 10% every year, no matter what. We've come a long way since then. We've got a handle on how we do that, and I want to commend you, Mr. Hofstadt, his office, and certainly Kelly and the team at HR for getting us there. So we appreciate that. We continue to be a partner with y'all on the health insurance and in the different insurance packages. A couple of notes for our budget in relation to how we work with the county. You'll notice that the clerk to the board position, we have cut one FTE when, when Ms. Carson left to pursue other opportunities. We decided because of the past few years with, with Josh coming on and standing up his function in relation to the board services, he now has the capacity to back, to back up Maria and what she does. She, she will continue to be your, your primary board clerk, but she has sufficient backup. And so therefore, we're able to get some efficiencies on how we manage that. A couple of other points, we, in the Inspector General Internal Audit Function, we, we, during the process of attrition, are down one auditor, and we're going to continue to leave that off the books. It really is associated with, if you'll remember back when we saw the flood of dollars coming from the feds related to COVID, and all the programs we're going to stand up, we added a auditor investigator to the team. Because of that was a good tool. We solved a lot of problems that we never get the news because we had issues. And so your good oversight, our team that supports that. To fast forward to today, we don't see a need to have that additional position. So unlike a lot of other governments, we are now removing that position. Certainly, the feds don't back off of positions they've added over the years. We're, we're trying to find efficiencies, and we've done that. And so that's down one FTE. You'll notice a couple of other issues in the documents. When I brought Josh on to take over the TDC collections, he, he developed a team, worked real close with the TDC, the TDD departments. We feel like we've got a really good product that we're providing to the department, to the county, to the tourism industries, certainly the, the collectors. We're, we're, we're really not the collectors, the, the institutions are, the lodging institutions are. It's our job to help them transfer those dollars to us and quite frankly, to the conference of the county. And so we feel like we've got a great sort of team in place now that are doing that. As you know, Josh, I've sort of expanded his role into being that liaison with your county departments from our finance teams and our board clerk teams. That has turned into a really great partnership between Josh and your department heads and your different departments, especially as it relates to the finances and the different things we have to do. I'm expanding that role a little more this year. One of the products, products that he's, or the projects that he's sort of taken a leadership role from a coordination standpoint is the implementation of a new ERP system for the county. That's a, you know, still an 18-month to 24-month kind of program. Working real closely with, with Sheila and the team over at OMB and the county on how we're going to do this, we're, we're getting close to honing in on the, the best way to do this. You'll see, we adjusted, I think during the meeting with Mr. Hofstadt, the cost for consulting and/or implementation team kind of thing from 100 to 150,000. That was based on the market conditions when Josh went to the GFOA this last couple of months and started talking to the folks that do this kind of consulting, and they realize it's actually not a $50,000 thing like it used to be. It's now a $250,000 thing. So we're actually working through how we're going to manage and coordinate an implementation of a new ERP, and Josh is leading from our side from a coordination effort. It, it helps your county departments and Sheila and her team to not have that additional, additional work on top of them while we work through this. And so there's a few more dollars shifted to the board services function from TD, TDD in his role. And really, that's the, the highlights of our budget request. There are still some dollars in there to help us with lost revenue. And as I've said in the past, this last past couple of years, the high inflation, the feds work to adjust and increase the, the fed rate, drives mortgage, mortgage rates, as well as other different things that we deal in and from a revenue stream into our general fund. That is still ongoing, and so we still have a, a lack of the excess fees to help balance out the revenue stream on our general fund operations, especially Article 5 technology costs supporting the courts. I'll tell you that we actually got some headway in the legislative session this year with a bill that ran that gives us flexibility in the, in the coming years on how we use court dollars, know which fees, fines, and court costs from folks that are in the system, the user base type of fees in the court system. Up until this last year, we could not use those fees to support Article 5 technology costs. And so we actually got a bill as part of our funding bill this last year. We got approval to be more flexible. We can use those dollars in the coming years to support technology improvements. So you'll see in the next few years, as we get a better revenue stream from fees, fines, court costs on the court side, that we can use those dollars. It's not solely coming from you to backstop us. For years, we used excess fees, especially on our general fund recording side, to support that. So you didn't have to pay for it. Last couple of years, obviously, we can't. The benefit, I'll tell you again, is that we're making a million and a half or $2 million a month in, in interest right now because of the fed rate, which drives treasuries, which is where we're at, because it's really, it's really risk averse. But they're making 4.95% right now across the board of $400 million in, in surplus assets for the county right now. 171-ish of the general fund, which is that, those dollars that are being created there, 750,000 to a million a month, those are new dollars that you get to use to support operations. So that sort of balances out the, the fact that I've lost revenue, or that's why I come to you and ask for some of that back to help us sustain until we can get to a, a better revenue environment from our official records, and then we'll go back to, to utilize an excess fees to cover those costs. Of course, at the same time, you will have lost all of that interest revenue. So it's a, it's a sort of a balancing game that goes on with us. So I'll leave you with that. That's where we're at. We, we see positive revenue streams in the future, although I tend not to say that because when, when we're seeing positive revenue streams on, on rates for mortgages because they're turning over quicker, then obviously that means that the economy has taken a turn to the wrong direction, and therefore, rates are coming down. So we, we do not celebrate the fact that we're going to have excess fees because generally, that's a, a drain on the rest of the economy. So the economy's doing fairly well at the moment. There's still high inflation that drives our, our issues, but it's helping our citizens and our businesses at the moment. So any questions?
Mr. Chairman, no, no questions. Mr. Clerk, I just want to say, you know, I've enjoyed the process of working with you my, my last budget with you as well. It's, you know, not just on the budget front, but on the partnership front between clerk's office and the county. I think we both could probably fairly say we've come a long way in the last 10 years. And it was, there were some tough, tough days, but I think we had good people on both sides and worked through a lot of issues and, and got a lot more, there's more trust, but there's also more transparency and accountability at the end of the day in the system, and I think that's a, that's a really good thing. So I, I appreciate your, your efforts through the years. Enjoyed working with you.
Thank you, sir. Me as well. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Busby.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, Mac Busby, Oaklous County Property Appraiser. In case some of y'all don't know, the property appraisers office this year is requesting a 3.9% increase in our budget. The majority of that is a 3% cost of living raise approved by the state. The rest of that is just the cost of doing business. Everything has gone up. So that is our budget this year. That equates to about $172,000 increase. And I don't have a lot to say like Mr. Peacock does. Mine's pretty simple one thing.
Commissioners, any comments?
Any, do you want to opine any on, on outlook in, you know, the year ahead, property valuations, any trends that it works?
Well, we did see about a, we did see about a 3.2% increase in values last year. We haven't seen that really slow down. It may not be quite that much. We haven't really seen a decrease in values yet. Of course, the number of sales have decreased because of interest rates and that type of stuff, but we're not seeing any decrease in values right now.
What about just, I guess incremental growth from, from new construction development?
There's about, I think it was 7.5% growth, new construction and an increase in values over last year. We're not really looking at the numbers for this year yet. We just got through certifying the, the role. So we will, we will start to look at those numbers as they come in, but that'll be at the end of the year before we really know. Any other questions?
All right.
No, it's easy.
Well, that's me. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Anyone here from the Supervisor of Elections Office? Wow. All right, State Attorney's Office. Sir.
Morning, Commissioners. Will Moore, Executive Director, Office of State Attorney on behalf of Ginger, Bowden, Madden. I believe before you is our budget request relating to our information technology needs, which as you know, or may not know, and actually I caught the tail end of Mr. Peacock's speech there, but the revenues for the information technologies are directly generated from mortgage filings, and which is, which is down as, as he stated. And so more general revenue supplement to our request this year. Your revenues from the mortgage filings are, through an interlocal agreement, are sent directly to Escambia County, which are managed by Escambia County. And with that, I'd be glad to take any questions regarding our request.
Commissioner? No question.
If none, on behalf of Ms. Madden, thank you for everything that you do for our office here in Oaklousa County, your continued efforts and contributions towards what is certainly our shared mission in keeping all the communities in Oaklousa County safe for those who live and work and worship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Lox. We, I'm sorry, we missed you earlier. We already swept your money, Paul. It's good. We swept yours. It's okay.
But if you're ready, come on up. It's okay.
Good morning, everybody. Apologize for our tardiness. I didn't see the notice until 8:25 when I left Crestview to be here as close to 8:30 as I could. This was really, literally as close to 8:30 as I could be here. So not a big, big bunch of surprises in my budget this year. We always have some extra expenditures. Probably the biggest thing, changing my budget this year from previous years is that we are capitalizing a new early voting site so that we will stand up because we know the general election is going to be busy. We're going to capitalize and stand up a sixth early voting site in Fort Walton Beach, closer out there toward the Mariester side of the world. Closer out there toward the Mariester side of the world. Uh, to help serve all the voters over there. That, of course, requires. Equipment and personnel, uh personnel being probably the biggest expense for that since it's. Twelve hour days for an extended period of time. So uh, that's really, uh, other than, you know, obviously, as always, uh, we are. Happy to be partners with the county and we always follow whatever the county policy is it real as it relates to personnel services raises. Uh, healthcare uh plans, all of that stuff. We just follow along with what the county does. Uh, and happy to continue doing so. Any questions, I guess? Other than that bake sale, which I mean for. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, Mr. Lux, you run such a professional office. Everybody in your office is amazing. If everybody in the nation had a supervisor of election like you, we would not have had such controversy. And it's just so great that we have it here in Oaklousa County. Thank you very much and tell your employees we said thank you as well.
I certainly will. Thank you.
Let's be honest, Shirley's really the one running the show. Uh, one question, I think there may have been a mistake. I didn't see the um, the extra hazard pay for canvassing board members in your budget anywhere, and I was just wondering where that went.
Yeah, well, that that that's oddly enough, the first thing that gets cut is the uh, is the is the safety and hazard pay for uh for canvassing board members.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to resign.
All right. There's no more questions. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Public Defender's Office. Medical Examiner's Office.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, Dr. Leslie cannot be here today. She sends her regards. She is in the morgue teaching our new fellow. Our fellowship program started a three week skill. And it's uh going well. And we already have a fellow committed for our program next year. Uh, so we're gonna start making forensic pathologists here in District One. Uh, the budget uh is just a nominal increase. You can see it's about eighty thousand dollars difference for Oaklousa County. That's based upon the apportionment that the. Domes Board and you all agreed upon in the operating agreement. Uh, the Domes Board has unanimously approved this budget and uh this is the last county we're seeing in a budget workshop. There have been no questions or concerns. Or issues with the budget request presented. So I'd answer any questions you might have.
You have to, you have to ask them all something in that way. People know that you're. Yep. Yes, sir. Uh, hey, Dan, good to see you. Good to see you. Any updates just on the on the building construction front?
We um, San Rosa County has approved the transfer of the land, uh, four point one acres approximately, uh, will transfer to domes. And an easement of about one point five acres to access because it's the back part of that parcel um that you may have seen. Domes Board is a um. I'm waiting on a resolution that the Domes Board uh will approve and sign and allow acceptance of that property. That should have happened this week, I believe. Um, and then we'll have that transfer complete. The design is progressing. I would say we're probably about forty percent design. One of the things we're waiting on, we had to get access to the site for geotechnical boring. So the civil engineering and site plans are. A little bit lagging and that's one of the things we need to update uh cost estimates. So we expect those in the next month.
Thanks, sir. Just just so the board know, Jason serves, uh, we have a construction team and Jason serves on that as our rep and we have one from each county and that's. Uh, they're hot, hot and active on that.
Great, thank you. Mr. Maddox. We're in public safety.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, Pat Maddox, Director of Public Safety. I'd like to start by giving thanks uh to all of you, the County Administrator and Deputy County Administrators for your constant support. Um, of our endeavors here in public safety. I know we ask a lot and I appreciate uh your patience with us as we move through that process. Uh, so we have nineteen slides. I am absolutely not going to read every single word on them. Uh, but I am gonna hit the highlights uh just to show you that we've been good stewards of the money that we use and the programs that we run. Uh, for emergency management, we'll go ahead and start staffing. We have one chief, one coordinator, one planner and one program technician. The addition of the planner has been outstanding for our program. Uh, to this point, we provide a central location for coordinated emergency efforts in Oaklousa County. Uh, that protect life and property and allow for efficient, well-coordinated disaster training, mitigation, response and recovery. And here are some of the accomplishments that we've been able to. Uh, get done this year. Updated the county's comprehensive emergency management plan. Based on lessons learned from Hurricane Sally and multiple smaller scale storm events. Uh, we also monitor disasters around the country and make sure that we incorporate any best practices into our local plan here in Oaklousa County. We updated the county's shelter plan in conjunction with the state emergency shelter plan. This ensured verifiable capacity between uh the state and the county and updated our numbers for our special needs shelters as well in coordination with the Department of Health. We responded to assisted or monitored over one hundred incidents ranging from weather and hazardous material spills to wildfires, fuel supply issues impacting locations of the county. Successfully transitioned to the state-sponsored Web E O C initiative, decreasing costs to the county and enhancing cross communication with the F D E M. And what that did was that allowed F D E M to go ahead and pay for that service and took the burden off the county as long as we integrated their uh web boards and communications, which we did. Uh, integrated the Florida Recovery Obligation calculation, which you've heard of F R O C into the Emergency Operations System. And uh, E M Chief Prince has been working with municipalities to get them on board as well and that um ensures that. Money can be available ahead of disasters when would they get declared rather than waiting for FEMA backfill at the end. Secured funding through Surtax to upgrade the audiovisual equipment and underlying tech for the E O C. Uh, that program is about, uh, we have about seventy five percent of the equipment in, ready to go, and the install will begin next month. We secured our first ever large-scale disaster feeding contract, which we've never had before in E M. The smaller scale contract is going up for bid currently. Um, for budgetary impacts, uh, grant funding dollars and sources are listed. Uh, on the slide, I'm not gonna go through them all. Um, those are either federal or state dollars that come through with our E M P A, E M P G and hazmat dollars. I will not bore you with the details there. They are what they are and we use them to fund our many programs. Questions on E M before I move to beach safety? Hearing on, moving on, Robert's rules all the way. Beach safety, staffing, one chief, one captain, three lieutenants, uh, and twenty-three seasonal guards for two hundred and thirty-eight days. Our summer ops, which is what we're doing now, is Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day weekend, nine A to eight P. Uh, we have between seven and nine guards on the weekdays, nine to eleven guards on the weekends, depending on the beach census. And believe it or not, it's our double red flag days, which are most labor intensive. And that's because rather than standard patrol, we have to be out there telling folks, please don't go in the water. Here's what a rip current looks like. Here's why you don't go in. And there's lots of educational. Uh, contacts that go on and I have some stats on that coming up later. Um, we have overlapping ships with three guards, nine eight to five P, four guards from ten eight to six P and two guards, two P to eight P with a closing lieutenant to make sure that everything is done correctly and the equipment is put away. Uh, we will. We have three point five miles of guarded beach. With five towers off peak, seven towers on peak and our beach census weekly of seven thousand in March can peak to eighty thousand in July. And that's about where we are right now. Uh, we have over eight hundred and fifty thousand documented preventative actions. That's guards going out and speaking with our patrons uh and our folks out there saying, hey, here's what this looks like. Here's what. Dangerous marine life looks like. Here's why you don't dig deep holes. Uh, in insert safety mantra there. Uh, they go out there and they they speak with these folks. We had thirty-three rip current and heavy surf rescues with no drowning fatalities on guarded beaches. Uh, we had seventy-two reports of lost children on the beach. All were found and returned to their families and we had a hundred and fifty-six medical calls. We have no additional general fund supported staff positions requested. Our recommended budget is approved by tourist development. And that is it for beach safety unless we have any questions there.
Mr. Chairman, no questions. Just a shout out to your team. Obviously, they did great work out there, but I've had the privilege of um, my son's been participating in the junior lifeguard program the last two weeks and been having a blast. Just done a really professional job of running that program, so.
Thank you, sir.
Get that channel.
Appreciate that feedback. Our Park Ranger Program, companion to our beach safety program. Staffing, we have one lead park ranger and one park ranger. Um, the program is is incredibly successful and I would anticipate. Seeing in the near future, if not uh next budget season, perhaps after that even, an expansion of this program, hoping to. Get some of those visits out to the parks in the north end and to other areas of the county as well. Park Rangers provide educational and enforcement component of Oaklousa County beaches, so locals and visitors can enjoy a safe beach environment. Education and prevention are the cornerstones of this program to gain compliance with ordinances and regulate vendor activity and much of that is education because, believe it or not, a lot of folks come out there and just really don't know what the rules are. We do our best to educate and that is the main goal of that program. To make sure that the beach is shared equitably. We conducted over, just the Rangers, over forty thousand documented patron contacts for educational and preventative actions. We performed over ten thousand patron contacts related to ordinance and informational service actions, including dogs on the beach, seven hundred and forty-one contacts there. Glass on the beach, thirteen hundred eighty-three contacts, smoking, twenty-nine hundred contacts, a little bit over that. We performed over two thousand vendor-related contacts for permitting and ordinance actions and that includes audits of the number of chair sets and umbrella sets that are out there. As well as other ordinance and upland-related uh conversations that we have with everybody out there. No additional general fund reported staff positions. The program is funded through the general fund and reimbursed through the revenues collected from vendor fees and uh the those fees go up. Um, annually, so uh we anticipate some more fees collected this year, uh somewhere between the four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar range uh to go ahead and fund that program. Any questions of Park Rangers?
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, Pat, I I appreciate that quick update and I remember talking with Mr. Coffee when that was coming forward and. Um, I I remember how was the vision was framed out, but. Thank you for providing the statistics that not only validate that it was needed. But also the customer or the the. Visitor contact is incredible too. As you said earlier, it would warrant the foundation for perhaps expanding that because I. I see several fold. I mean, we probably all get the emails with the dogs on the beach or smoking or glass, whatever the case may be. This is proof. That um, that vision that was helped crafted and created is actually working. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir. And I will give a shout out to the two Rangers we have because. They're incredible patients when they're being baked in hundred and ten degree heat out there dealing with people. They are phenomenal. We do not get conduct conduct complaints on these two gentlemen. They are amazing.
I'm sure they get some pushback from time to time.
They do, they do. But uh, they work quite well out there and I'm I'm very proud of the work they do. I'm sure Rich is as well.
Chairman. I just want to say, Patrick, that I'm all for expanding the the beach park ranger program. I'm. Between the two of us, we have the beaches and we get the complaints and um. You, since you all have been there, it's been very professional, but people just do not understand why the the golf can look glassy but have rip current. They just cannot get that. So thank you for what you've done. You've saved so many lives. I mean, when you look at what people expect, government, public safety is at right at the top. Probably that and roads. Those are the two, those are the two things we get all. Roads, public safety and trash is right behind.
Yes, yes. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, moving forward to EMS. So with EMS, we had thirty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-six requests for assistance uh resulting in twenty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-three billable transports. Consistent with projections in our three-year rate plan, which I brought to you previously. And uh, this is on its on its way up as well. Uh, we are projecting additional rises coming and the difference between the requests for service and the billable transports. Is what actually winds up resulting in uh medical necessity billing. So um, the reason that we are able to uh have our revenue rates coming in a little bit higher this year, as you'll see. Is that we have a robust process and fantastic people in place that go back through at the non-medical necessities, go back, revisit them. Sometimes it's a change in semantics in the way we write a report. Sometimes it's different uh documentation that we need to provide, but we go back and it visit each one of those non-medical necessities and rebuild it as necessary, oftentimes coming back with a successful result. Um, we developed a community paramedicine section, as you're well aware, to care for our vulnerable citizens, including opioid and other substance abuse clients. And of course, those are. Paid for with a uh, a combination of the core and regional abatement fund dollars. And as you know, uh, we selected two of our community paramedics from our internal sources, uh, two of our paramedics who are doing a fantastic job out there. And at the last regular meeting, requested backfill of those positions with additional hires. We deployed a Q R V two to the Dorcas area for enhanced medical response up there, primary medical calls in the. Um, newly allocated Dorcas response area. Uh, and again, just for our friends at home. Um, the way that the county came into to being uh responsible for that area was not a county endeavor looking to take over fire districts. This was the result of responding to a state initiative in uh Habsville eight ninety-seven, which required the county to go ahead, step in and administer that program. Uh, EMS was awarded the American Heart Association's Mission Lifeline Gold Plus Award for Excellence in Out of Hospital Cardiac Care, the gold standard for the tenth year in a row, which is an outstanding accomplishment. To uh Chief Wellborn, who's here today and his team. Infield return of spontaneous circulation, otherwise known as ROSC, which is a s- return of a sustainable heart rhythm. Rates of twenty-eight percent in our cardiac patients, the average is twenty. So they are doing an outstanding job out there. We maintained thirteen county-wide ALS BLS ambulances and additional ambulance and crews requested this budget year. Uh, particularly for the north end of our county where it will be uh stood up with the tremendous growth that's going on up there and the additional calls for service. We replaced one quick response vehicle, replaced four type one ambulances, replaced two type two ambulances and deployed to Madison County for Hurricane Adalia response. Staffing, we have a hundred and fifty-three total positions, one director, one division chief, three captains, eight lieutenants and a hundred and thirty-six paramedics and E M Ts. One administrative supervisor, one supply and logistics coordinator, one billing specialist and one training coordinator. We have eighty-eight full-time positions, which are paramedics and E M Ts, forty-eight relief positions of paramedics and E M Ts. We only have three full-time vacancies. One lieutenant, two paramedic and no E M Ts. Three years ago, we had fourteen paramedic vacancies, if that tells you the progress that we're making. Uh, not only in the ability to uh pay them what they what they deserve and are are heavy lifts and thanks to you. Uh, for the ability to do that, but in the p- policies, procedures, the good equipment that we're giving them and the ability to make their working environment a little bit better, all contribute to that retention rate. Moving forward. We have requested six additional staff positions, but I know that sounds like a lot, but two of those. Um, are our community paramedics that we had to backfill. Uh, so those are actually paid for for core dollars, the remaining uh foreign raft dollars. The remaining uh four positions are standing up that additional truck in the north end. So there's gonna be two E M Ts and two paramedics requested. To stand up that additional vehicle in the north end, additional ambulance for response in the north end of the county. Uh, our budget monitoring initiatives recurring rate increased uh of two point five percent. For the next two years and that gives us plus or minus five hundred thousand into the coffers. And in doing our budget analysis this year. We realized that we're actually a little bit above that. That two and a half percent rate has resulted in right now about a ten percent increase. And that is not only due to the rate increase, but due to the uh medical billing that we go back and revisit as well as our collections. Uh, we are actually projected to bring in closer to one million extra from the previous increase. We're gonna break that ten million dollar barrier this year. Uh, so we're very excited about that. Um, enhanced contract revenue collection, non-medical necessitary necessity audit. Uh, the current fiscal year. Revenues are up by over ten percent, which is over six hundred and thirty thousand and we'll have to see, it fluctuates between about nine percent and ten percent, depending on what that month's revenue does. We are graduating an additional four paramedics. Uh, and anticipate four candidates for the upcoming year and those are house ingrown paramedics that we take from our E M T program, which is the way to go. It's been tremendously successful. And that is just an example. On the very bottom right, uh, you'll see that ten point two percent, that's where we sat at our increase currently in our revenues. Uh, we hope to continue that moving forward. There's no reason we shouldn't and we expect to break that ten percent barrier. Um, and I've talked a lot. Any questions?
Just a quick question. Is that due to insurance collection?
Some of it is insurance, some of it is calls, call for service increase. So we have more more billable runs and some of it is going back and making sure that the medical necessities. Uh, are where they are. So if we get a tremendous number of non-medical necessity kickbacks, we go back, revisit them, rebuild them to have more billable runs.
Thank you. Ten years ago, that was in shambles.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Maddox. Thank you.
That was the end. Let me just say one other thing.
Yes, ma'am.
You, you and I just want to thank you and Chief Wellborn for the professionalism you've brought to this department. Because it wasn't always this way. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Has anyone from the Public Defender's Office arrived?
Arrived.
Good morning. I'm David Lambert, I T Director for the Public Defender's Office, First Circuit. Our budget this year, uh. The total request increased eighteen and a half percent over last year. Two dollar recording fee uh actually dropped significantly this year. So what we're asking from the county. Is up quite a bit, but the three main driving factors for our budget increase are. So a couple of salary increases. Um, and. Our. Video and body cam storage, cell phone storage. That's starting to hit us pretty heavy. I know it's hitting state attorney and pretty much all departments equally. So we saw a hundred and eighty-six percent increase on that line item. In addition to that, we're trying to replace legal assistant laptops that are now a little over six years old. Um, we break it up. Break it up the best we can. We don't want to get, if we could buy fewer and then buy a few next year, and then you end up with a lot of different types of hardware to support warranties expiring at different times and that sort of thing. So we're looking to get just eleven laptops to replace all the support staff laptops, and then the following year we'll try to do the attorney laptops. But those are the three main things that have changed from last year that's driving our increase.
Did you all have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Ketchel.
So we're not going to shoot the messenger. We know that this is absolutely necessary. Everything that you said is so necessary, and there's really been no logical place. Those fees never covered it and haven't been enough. And this is a problem we've had with the legislature dumping stuff on local government. It's not you at all. So we're more than willing to step up to it, but it's frustrating because I wish we could find another source of revenue for this, and we say this every year, but and we know that these body cams, I mean, you've got all this storage space you have to deal with and somebody to go through it all, so. I understand the entire need. I just wish that we could find some other way to do it, but thank you for delivering the message. We're not in any way upset with you.
There was one additional thing I was asked to mention. Bruce Miller was the public defender. He was down at the conference last week and found out that other public defenders offices are starting to sign up for like AI legal assistant software. Case Text has one called Code Counsel, and they're using this for document review and that sort of thing. So the other, some of these other public defenders offices are getting the counties to fund that. So he did want me to mention that. We don't have any pricing on it just yet. I took a look at the Code Counsel site yesterday. It was like two hundred and fifty dollars per month for up to ten users. So bulk pricing goes down a little bit.
Just work with our county administrator this next year. I mean, it is what it is. I mean, you have to have these tools, so I understand that. It's not like you're asking for luxuries. These are important tools.
Okay, just wanted to mention that.
And that's a good point, Commissioner, and David's been a good partner of this county for the many years I've worked with him. Unfortunately, we bear the statutory responsibility to fund the IT portion of their budget, and as we all know, the IT costs are rising. David, in our discussion, was able to cut a few items out that we could purchase this year to defer that additional cost onto the budget. But yeah, the bottom line is the fee is woefully inadequate to cover the costs that we see and the rising costs each year, and we need some type of legislative remedy to increase that cost to cover the burden that's placed on us.
And we have really talked with all of our legislators. I know Vac has talked to the legislators. We can't get any movement on it, so maybe bake sales is the answer.
Yeah, a couple of quick comments. I mean, first, so the eighteen percent is obviously significant, but it's, when you look at raw dollars, five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar increase, and so I don't think we need to get too worked up over that at the end of the day, because I understand where the need is coming from. I did want to kind of chime in on the AI piece. It's interesting. Make sure, obviously, your attorneys know not to be using that to write briefs and turn them in. I think I saw some recent news where that could get you into some potentially hot water. So careful there, or AI will start citing cases that didn't actually exist in the real world. There is an interesting kind of wrinkle there in like what our statutory obligation is, right, relative to what is IT? So does AI, which is in supplementing really what would otherwise be the effort required by a human, which would then in and of itself be a budgetary function we would not be responsible for, then fall in our bucket as all of a sudden being something we're going to now pick up the cost for something because it's a shift from, you know, the traditional model of using a human brain to using a computer, and I think we probably before we just say, yeah, throw that cost on us, let's pay for it. There may be some, you know, thought to systemically what, you know, what precedent is created, and I'm not suggesting you guys shouldn't be using the technology.
Right.
I don't know that you should, but I'm not suggesting you shouldn't, but I'm also just trying to be mindful of, we have to slow down, and we have those kind of things tossed at us and think about how does that fit within the architecture of what our responsibilities of expenditure is. So anyhow, interesting thought, I would say, you know, before I said, let's go pay for that, I'd say do some hallmark and let's talk about it.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay.
By any chance, do you have the numbers with you for our neighboring counties and your change in budget for?
I don't.
For them, okay.
It's fairly similar. Thank you very much, Lanier.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks. Chief Weeks?
He is ready. We made it halfway out of the gate first, so now.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman, Mr. Austin, Ms. Parsons. I appreciate you giving me this opportunity this morning to come up and present our budget items and praise our corrections staff a little bit on some of their accomplishments throughout the year. So as all of you already know, I'm sure you've been to the facility, you know what our capacity is, you know where we're currently standing. I think, I think the last number you were given for capacity for our jail was five hundred and five ninety-four. We're actually at five fifty-eight due to having to close down the downstairs portion. I'm sure you're all familiar with downstairs. It's where we were housing our max inmates just for safety and security issues, trying to get some remodeling done to make it a safer environment to actually house inmates to be compliant with state standards. Remember to hit this button. So I wanted to highlight this. This is, this is near and dear program to me, our Emerald Coast Life Center anchored program within the jail. The Emerald Coast Life Center and Dana Claus' work through the Anchored Inmate Rehabilitation Program has been recognized on national and local levels. This year, Dana was awarded the Okaloosa Bar Association's Liberty Bell Award for her transformative work within the justice system and her efforts to truly change the lives of those involved within the program. This, this program is like nothing our jail has ever seen before. The, the success rates of these inmates not coming back to jail and actually being successful when they're released is astonishing. There's a lot of eyeballs on this program. Very proud of Dana and her work. We, we, this year, we were the first jail in the state of Florida to leverage a reentry program that's in compliance with the Affordable Healthcare Act that provides insurance to non-sentenced inmates. This insurance is low and no, low to no cost and available in the healthcare marketplace, providing inmates with coverage even after they are released from custody. We run this as a reentry program so that when inmates are coming in, they don't have any insurance or pharmaceutical coverage. They not only have it while they're with us, we can, if they're going out to the hospital for something, we can bill their insurance, and we can also build their insurance for in-house pharmaceutical needs, and then they also leave with that coverage as they re-enter back into society to position them better for, for success in the community. We've also been extremely focused on different opportunities to build staff morale and to create department-specific functions that incentivize our current staff and to make our department a much more appealing option to potential correctional applicants. The start of the Employee Council leverages open communication to build morale, improve employee satisfaction, and allows every shift in division to have non-supervisory representation in a quarterly one-on-one meeting with me. What, what we have found just over the last year, year and a half, is that a lot of times things get lost in the shuffle when you have, when you have a chain of command that's structured the ways, way ours are. So when, when, when word is trying to make its way to the chief or folks have good recommendations or suggestions, a lot of times those things might get shot down by someone along in the, in the chain of command, or they may just not make its way up to where it should be. So we've established this Employee Council meeting. We just had our last, our first meeting last month, and it was a success. It went really well. Over the last year, we've implemented the deployment of chemical agents and tasers as added tools within our use of force options within the jail. We also partnered with Sheriff Aiden, who donated over fifty tasers to our department. This allowed us to certify and arm all certified officers with a taser. The secondary weapons being added as a less lethal option greatly increases staff and inmate safety and reduces the risk of staff and inmate injuries. Due to the ever-increasing cost of forty caliber ammunition, our department transitioned to a new nine-millimeter pistol. This platform officers offers a significant reduction in the continuing annual costs of training ammunition and maintenance, as well as increased capacity and accuracy. This type of weapon transition is consistent with what we've seen happen, happening all throughout the state of Florida due to the, just the huge difference in ammunition cost from forty caliber to nine millimeter. Our outstanding medical and mental health teams were recognized this year by the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare and were awarded the prestigious National Program of the Year, where our medical and mental health program were recognized as leading the way for the nation. The NCCHC is the national accrediting body for all correctional healthcare services throughout the country, so this is, this was huge for them. I'm extremely proud of them. A lot of hard work went into this. Due to the continual struggle for a large number of the incarcerated to maintain identity documents like identification cards and driver's licenses, we partnered this year with our local tax collector's office in an effort to secure these tools that are essential for moving past their incarceration to better, more productive endeavors and to ultimately reduce the potential for recidivism. And a huge shout out to, to John Holgate, and I thought he was in here, but John was, John really played a huge part in this and partnering with our team and making sure that it was a smooth transition and make sure things were set up so that we could bring those inmates into that facility during, during non-business hours to get that accomplished. So really appreciate that partnership. We are also in the process of standing up a tactical response team. This team is being led by a highly trained tactical commander and will be trained and will be trained and equipped to address multiple types of incidents that may require a dynamic entry, such as inmates that have barricaded themselves inside of a cell, hostage or suicidal situations, and unannounced housing and cell shakedowns. This team will effectively position our department in a much more proactive position in the fight to keep dangerous narcotics and weapons out of our facility. This year, your corrections department made community our focus. We represent nearly a hundred and fifty of Okaloosa County's finest employees with an intense drive to serve our community. The next slide shows just a few of the service projects we've undertaken. We, we kicked off our inaugural, our inaugural Department of Corrections Autism Awareness fundraiser by creating an autism awareness polo shirt that all officers were able to make a donation to wear that shirt during Autism Awareness Month, and we, we effectively were able to raise over a thousand dollars and presented the autism, Emerald Coast Autism Center with a thousand dollar check. This, in an attempt to become more involved within all of the communities we service, we now have a public relations team that attend the municipal and chamber events. I'm sure you all have probably seen Sergeant Hatton and Officer Tarver at a lot of these. We're doing this in an attempt to maintain a better grasp of what's happening within our communities so that we are, so we're a voice at the table and to offer our support where needed. This is just some pictures from the Okaloosa County, the annual Okaloosa County Sheriff's Office Youth Field Day. We participated in that this year. It was a huge hit. The kids really, really enjoyed it. This is some pictures from our, our annual food truck frenzy for National Correctional Officer and Nurses Appreciation Week, and we also did some volunteering at the United Way Day of Caring, where I believe our teams went to multiple schools and washed and cleaned buses, things like that. One thing to note is a lot, our folks work twelve-hour shifts, and you'll see the folks in the blue in the bottom of these pictures. One thing that I believe is commendable and worth noting is the majority of these folks worked midnights, and they got off at six-twenty that morning and went and changed in their blue shirts and went and washed buses all day. So, and that's, most of those are night shift folks that had worked all night. So I just, I just, I love the, I love the care and the drive of them wanting to go out and volunteer their time after having worked all night. They consistently do that, so I'm just proud of them. This is just an overview. Six thousand eight hundred and sixty-six inmates were booked into the jail in 2023. I'm not sure if you caught that, six thousand eight hundred and sixty-six inmates in a year booked into the jail. Currently this year, we have booked approximately five thousand sixty-eight. If we continue with these current trends, we'll be on track to meet those same numbers or exceed by the end of the fiscal year. This is an average daily population versus current capacity. I will tell you keyword average here. We've, these show that, you know, seven fifty-two, that's an average. I can tell you we've been over eight, eight-thirty in a lot of these for these years. With the recent bond legislation that's placed very strict requirements that drastically hinder bonds from being set before first appearance, we've recently noticed a climb in our, in our inmate population numbers. We're expecting an approximate twenty-one percent increase in facilities and equipment due to the analysis of current issues we're actively facing within the aging facility, which, not a secret, you've all come and seen. Our inmate health services are up by eleven percent due to rising costs on all medical supplies and services across the board, and inmate, inmate food services are up by fourteen percent due to market increase in food. The last slide there is just a representation of our key fiscal twenty-five requests, positions, security cameras, body scanner, and replacement of inmate-issued items like mattresses, uniforms, things like that that are deteriorating. I do have notes. I'm prepared to answer any questions on those or anything else that you may have.
Commissioner Ketchel.
Leadership matters from the White House to the schoolhouse. What you're doing is so out of the box at our jail and with such limited space. It's really frustrating. When you said capacity's five fifty-eight, on average, I think you said it's around eight hundred fifty-something.
We've, we've been that high, yes.
Very frustrating, but the things, the programs that you've put into place that you've received awards for, but also the mental health, I mean, it's amazing that you've been able to do that. The healthcare, that should be best practices, and I don't even know if you know this, but the Florida Association of Counties often does the best practices. You need to bring that to their attention. This needs to be duplicated in all the counties in Florida. Sixty-seven counties need to be doing this because every population have these healthcare costs, and I, I don't know if they know about this. I mean, it shouldn't be the best kept secret. You've done something fabulous here. I mean, one of the benefits of the mental health diversion program is once they get out of jail, Medicare covers, Medicaid covers their stuff. But what you've done is bought insurance so that they're covered here. That's huge for us. It's huge for cost savings, huge for the inmates themselves. The state identifiers, I mean, I cannot thank you enough, Chief Weeks. I mean, leadership really does matter, and we've seen the worst since I've been here, and I thank you for being the best.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Paul. Thank you, Chair. Appreciate that, Chief. Just to reiterate, I mean, culture is what an amazing shift for good that you've created there, and, and I appreciate you've been very gracious to obviously keep me updated along the journey, but also the success of that anchored program. I mean, talking about connecting with someone's heart before they, even while they're there for a period of time or on the horizon, coming, you know, back into society, that's transformative for them and gives them a hope and an identity and purpose, and it validates that. And so I just love that you're doing that. The healthcare thing is Commissioner Ketchel had on. That's, that's spectacular. So I just want to say job well done. Thank you for shifting the culture for good there. And I mean, what you and your team do, please take back to them. Thank you for allowing me to take a tour a couple of months back with Allison when I was there to see firsthand what you're up against, but also what you've done in the face of that. You've always got an optimistic outlook, and from my perspective, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any updates on the progress, and this may be a correct question, but jail sighting committee and then also the plan in the year ahead with regard to, you know, kind of long-range planning for facilities?
Yeah, so we, we, we have, our site selection committee have met, and, and we are still in, I believe, negotiations with, for, on a site, and that's still in the works. Craig may have more to elaborate on that, but I know it's still in the works.
We, we are still working through the site, trying to bring that forward, and parallel to that, we're also working on a consultant. We actually have shortlisted the three, and we're bringing in for interviews next Wednesday for oral interviews for three potential site consultants. So the two hopefully will sync up here pretty soon, and we'll have a lot more information coming forward, both on the consultant side, and then that'll start the process.
Okay, I'll just note, you know, we all know this, but it's, it's finally time to bite that bullet, and I almost say that I'm not going to be here to help support that effort, but I, you know, I haven't taken a tour out there this, this year again. It's, it's, it's time. You know that. You've known it for a long time, and your folks have known it for a long time, but, you know, for the, for the safety of the folks that are incarcerated and for our employees, it's, it's, it's time. That facility has, has, has provided, it's, it's more than its sheer service for, for what, what it costs way back in the day, but it's time that we, we make that investment, just like we did with this facility, and just like we've done with the courthouse in Crestview, and like we'll be doing in partnership with the tax collector. But it's, I think we've put this one off about as long as we can.
Yes, sir. Great. Thank you, Chief Weeks.
May I say one more thing? While laying up on Commissioner Boyle's, whoever gets elected, I hope they go tour the jail immediately because once you see the jail, you, you understand why we have to replace it. It's very, very important that we replace that jail.
I, I will tell you, most all of the candidates have, have taken it upon themselves to come and tour the jail and we've, and we've offered that.
Oh, that's great. They have already?
Most of them, yes.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful.
Voluntarily, yes. And I, and, and I do want to tell you that I appreciate, I appreciate each of you taking the time to come out and tour and at the length that you did. Just to see and get a good grasp of where we're currently at. So I mean, not only did it mean a lot to me, it meant a lot to our staff. To see that each of you took the time and, and the effort to come and, and see what they're working in every day. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Commissioner Kett, so it's a perception issue with a lot of people. When we get to the jail discussion, people have a perception that the jail is a prison. And they forget that a lot of our populace are, they, they can visit there. You can, you can go to our jail for driving thirty miles an hour over the speed limit. I mean, it's, it's, there's very. Statute gives opportunity of a, a physical arrest. On a wide variety of issues. And I think it's still about seventy percent of the people that leave our jail leave with no criminal record.
Eighty, eighty to ninety percent are non-convicted, non-sentenced, waiting for their case to be heard. So.
So we'll have that perception battle to cross. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Well, I can say I'm willing to take it on because it's the right thing to do.
Ms. Adams from tourist development.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I just want to start by reminding everybody what our mission is because people only think I just. Bring tourists here and slam the economy, but it's not. It's we make time spent here, whether visiting, living or working more valuable to all. And through a lot of our programs, including Little Adventures and some of the other products that we developed, we feel really confident that we're supporting our mission. We've had some growth over the past couple of years. These are just a few of comparisons from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. Tourist development tax revenue has increased fifty-two percent. Our visitors have increased seven percent. It's actually slowing down a little bit. The goal is uh, less people spending more money. Uh, visitor spend on top of tourist development taxes increased twenty-eight percent. And our partner program has grown from sixty-five partners to two hundred and fifty partners, which means we need some additional staff because that program is just um. Increasing and it, it's success. Uh, we're trying to keep up with that. Public safety has increased thirty-two percent. Again, that's still not enough. It's the ten percent from the state statute. Um, our departments, we started with four departments. We have seven now. Our reef program, which is one of the products that we invest a lot of time and effort into, has grown a hundred and fifty-six percent and people actually come here. Just for the reefs and for diving and not even to go to the beach. And then employees are, by the twenty twenty-four will go from uh, forty-five employees to seventy-one employees. This is what my org chart looks like. But we've also increased um, our scope of work, particularly with meetings and events. So six months ago, we sold the convention center. Now we have the um, fairgrounds, the Baker Arena, and then the Shoal River Project.
I've been asking to get rid of that thing forever. I didn't realize we installed it.
Oh, my choice of words when it comes to conventions, meaning, meaning as a, as a property. No, it's still there. It has not burned down to the ground either. So it's still there. But we've added venues. So we also have, are working uh, with sport, sporting events. We're filling hotel space. And we're selling wedding venues. So we've increased this department. It's no longer just solely focused on the convention center. So here's my um, proposed budget for twenty twenty-five versus twenty twenty-four. I focus on the top part of it. Um, which is really my operational bu- budget. This current year it's thirty point five million and. We, when I met with you before, we had a ten percent increase. We brought it back down. We're um, proposing an eight percent increase. A lot of this is operational and equipment. Um, the six penny, you can see the increase there. There's eleven percent. Change. And then there's the cash balances that I'll go through in a minute. Our expenses are higher, uh, but not too bad. Um, a sales and marketing plan is increasing fourteen percent. Last year it had no money in there for the entire expansion. So that includes other programs that um. We are putting in their operations, you can see. And then also the cash balances at the bottom um, will increase uh, eight percent. On the left-hand side, you can see some capital projects that could be used out of the six penny. Some are. On the right-hand side, these are some of the other um, the other projects that we'll be using out of tourist development tax dollars. Some of them um. You can see equipment and, and um, the aquarium for both welcome centers. And um, also some dune restoration and some other additional uh, projects. This is the original five-year capital um, project plan. Some monies have been um, obviously spent. Some will be moving like the bridge to bridge. Going on that. Um, and we have other dollars in there, working still on going with Crystal Beach and Tarpon and, and others. And I do believe that that Destin Connector, Commissioner Ponder is also moving forward this year. Here's public safety. As I said, it's not, no. Okay. Here's public safety. Again, as I say, it's only ten percent and it's not enough. We have great relationships with all of uh, the teams out there. I will tell you. The beach flag program, text program, we've sent over one point nine million texts. And we're also almost at the capacity of what we purchased through October. So I will be putting more money in there. It's a very important program to have. Um, and then also we established two years ago a public safety reserve. So if in the event that we had. A crisis or a storm that we could, people still wanted to go on the beach, we could still fund the public safety. Um, the chambers and the museums are relatively the same as last year with the exceptions of the museums, they're getting their same amount. But we've added a, a grant match. So if a project comes in throughout the year where one of them wanted to. Get some additional funds, they could, they could have an application for it. So everybody's the same, but we did add some more because in mid-year, it might happen. And here are our reserves from restoration to dredging, operations, promotions. You can see them all here. Um, they were listed at, at the uh, in the very first slide. We continue to um, populate our reserves. It's an important um, part of what we do. These are the municipalities. On the left, you can see that some municipalities did not request any money this year. But on the right, this is the money that they're banking. If you recall, when um, we expanded the taxing district, they have five years to spend their dollars. This has actually been a really great program. We get to work with the municipalities, talk about tourism projects, how we can use those monies. Your money's not going away. And so some of them are banking their money for future projects. And lastly, this is a sales and marketing plan. Again, it includes um, paid media, countywide. Uh, promotional activities, destination stewardship. We're ramping up our third pilot, which is real time. To celebrate our fishing fleet and boost them up. And um. Also, we have, still have money in there, put aside for, for bidding on sporting events to get um, bigger, broader sporting events here um, throughout the year. I'd be happy to answer any questions. That you have.
Commissioner Kettel.
I want to take this opportunity uh, because I can't talk to all my commissioners about anything. So if anybody watched the Republican National Convention last week, Congressman Michael Wallace introduced the Gold Star Parents. It was probably the most moving thing for me of the entire convention. I cried through that, that whole presentation of the loss of those thirteen persons. But one of them was Nicole G. Nicole G's mother spoke. Nicole G is one of the statues we're building in our park that you all approved. And she's holding an infant. And she's the one that held the infant on the tarmac and then two, two days later she was blown smithereens. So the, the uh, we've already got the artist rendition going. I just want to tell you all that I was very excited that one of those. Was recognized and it's wonderful. So it'll be exciting, but that's just taking a moment of your time. I'm sorry for that, but it's important because it comes out of your budget.
Right. Mr. Pond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that. Um, thank you, Jennifer. Uh, just a quick question, maybe it's you or Craig. I, I know that we, I didn't see it in the. Five-year plan or the other capital projects, but the special needs park I know is being funded from TDD dollars. Where I didn't know where that fell in here. It's not listed.
It's in, it's in my budget. It, it's in the um, some.
It's, it's already in this year's budget. So that's why it's not showing for.
Okay.
Moving forward, it's expected to be spent some of this year.
This year, yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And if not all, then we'll carry it over.
The problem. Thank you.
Uh, I just want to say, um, you know, I think it was tough to get there, but we really kind of turned um, and maybe broadened our focus um, and kind of have a. Real recognition of the need for, to balance um, you know, local quality of life with um, tourism. And I think that, you know. You've done a, a really good job of coming along in that um, adventure of really kind of shifting the way we even think about um, tourism dollars in Okaloosa County. And quite frankly, I think that was somewhat unique. I think we were kind of on the forefront of, of doing that. And I think it is, you know, there, there are a number of ways here. We can see how that's, that's bearing fruit and we'll continue to. Uh, bear fruit. A, a super silly, small example is the new uh, welcome center in Crestview and you and your team's willingness to. Um, partner and go out on a limb a little bit and working with the library cooperative to be able to install um, a book lending machine to fill um, a gap. And, and accessibility in that area, which will benefit locals. Uh, but also has uh, spillover impact to our um, snowbirds that are coming through and to be able to market um, the library cooperative services um, to those folks who are visitors to our community. And so. I just wanted to highlight um, that I appreciate, uh, I know that's not always easy as you're trying to balance um. The industry partners on the other side who have their expectations about how these dollars should be spent, but I think we've done a. Pretty darn good job and, and really um, doing it a different way. And I think um, you know, frankly, in a better way. And then I wanted to um, just highlight, because I hope it'll continue into the future, the partnership that was created with the municipalities uh, through ultimately arriving at agreement on sharing those dollars. Again, that was a contentious issue. But I think what that's done more broadly has improved the overall net relationship between. The county government and those city governments, um, because they see that we really are trying to, to partner with them and support them. And that's a wholesale change in the way those relationships uh, were viewed, I think, you know, a decade ago. So uh, anyhow, appreciate you and your, your team.
Thank you. I will say I was at a national tourism conference last week and I was, I was a speaker and I spoke to these things and people were shocked. That we actually have relationship municipalities that we work with the clerk, that we invest money into our, they. People, you can't do that. And I want to make a bet and we did. So thank you for allowing me to do that and work with everybody. You know, risk and legal and the clerk and you all in the municipalities because it is, people are starting to catch on and it's nice to be. Be someone who can say, yes, Destin. I was speaking, it was Destin, the state of Maine and Tahiti. And I got to talk about this. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. And yeah, well, yeah, it was interesting. And one more thing I want to say, uh, Mr. Chair, that pie chart is forty percent. We got down, a couple of years ago, we were at forty-eight. We got down to forty percent. Thank you very much.
Jennifer, I, I really like your mission statement. I, I think um, I think it's applicable to the entire county. Um, it, and it should be applicable to all aspects of county government, the things that we do. And so um, so hopefully over time, maybe we'll discuss that more.
Absolutely.
Serious take to implement something like that. I know in the past we've talked about a mission statement for the county.
Well, years ago, when I came in, it was blah, 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 increased tourism development tax. Yeah, you know, and I was just like, I did, it didn't make sense to what I knew that we needed to, but it was. So it's like, you know, by whatever percent and visitor spend. So. Be, it's, it's open for anybody who's applicable. We all have it in my office. So that's, that's what we know that we need to do. Thank you.
Mr. Hofstedt.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, uh, that, yeah, I, I guess I'm. I'm through with trying to guess how long these meetings are going to take. The first one was over three hours and we're an hour and fifteen minutes into this one, but. That kind of covers the presentations we had for the board. Um, I did request that all our department heads show up today, since this is our last budget workshop. I'm not sure if there was some ground we didn't cover that you would like to speak to. Certainly our staffs here and can answer those questions should you have them, but. You have our budget presentation, again, all in at about seven point four percent, covering a lot of ground, whether it's. You know, increased spend at the jail, which is much needed, uh, holding line on a lot of these budgets, um, where they're able to. But uh, we're trying to cover some gaps we've got in our, our service coverage. And I thought we've done that with this budget that's prepared and presented to this board. So. Uh, again, I appreciate this board's guidance, your leadership and putting this together every year, but. Uh, I mean, you know, again, if there's any final questions you'd like to ask our staffs here. Uh, if not, we will, I think our special meeting is set for eleven. My apologies for that. We'd had it right after this meeting, but uh, it's a, it's a time and date certain. So our special meeting's eleven where we'll go through both the property tax mileage and MST, MST mileage. Uh, that should be a fairly quick uh, presentation to the board with those two votes. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you again.
Yes, sir. At this time, we'll open for public comment. If there's anyone from the public desiring to speak. All right, seeing none. Yes, ma'am.
I see one more comment, which is not exactly to the budget, but. As information comes out about this assassination attempt, it appears that one of the issues has been that. The different public officials could not talk to each other because they don't have what we're putting in place with the twenty-one million dollars that we spent out of Surtax money. Isn't that interesting that, that communication is so important between, you know, police officers, Secret Service, fired. Nobody could talk to each other and that's one of the issues they have. I thought of us immediately when I heard about that. It's been really all over the news now. Thank you.
You know, in response to that, we've taken some, some very forward steps as a commission. Uh, the radio program, the bridge program for the, the computers to be able to work together. That's saving a lot of time and I believe it saved a lot of lives over time. All right. Well, nothing further. We'll close the workshop and be back at eleven.
Morning and welcome to the special meeting Tuesday, July 23rd at 11:00 a.m. Mr. Hofstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the time of our budget process where we set the tentative millage rate both for the property tax millage and for the MSTU millage. Whereby the Board's action sets a tentative millage. You cannot go above that without a unanimous support of the Board for any change above that in your public hearings in September. You can go lower than that. So with that, I've got a few slides I'd like to speak to very quickly. And then that'll be followed by two actions, setting the property tax millage at 3.8308 mills, followed by setting the MSTU millage at .299 mills. First slide I want to touch on is just again, this is recap of that proposed millage rate, 3.8308 mills. That is holding the line on the property tax millage. I believe this is for the ninth year. That will generate about $111 million in revenue. Of that, we calculate our collection percentage at 95%. So our collection estimate is 105,477,768. I want to reference that the current year rollback rate is 3.6324 mills. That would be the millage you would set to collect the same amount of revenue as we've collected for this year. So that is a difference of delta in the two millage rates of .1984. Also, our aggregate millage rate, want to touch on that very quickly. That is a combination of your property tax millage and your MSTU millage. Now, if you look at those two numbers and you think you add those together, and that should be your aggregate millage, it's not. And that's because your MSTU millage is applied to the unincorporated areas of the county and not those properties within the municipal boundaries. So that aggregate millage rate is 3.9671 mills. Again, holding the line on that millage rate, and that exceeds the rollback rate of 3.7683 mills. This is just our revenue distribution for Avalorm Tax. You'll see the bulk of that revenue goes in support of the general fund. That is spread among general fund departments within the BCC and those constitutional offices that rely on property taxes, namely the Sheriff's Office. So the big bulk of that revenue goes to support our Sheriff's Office and law enforcement. County Health Department pretty much holding the line on their request of 657,000. Our capital outlay is estimated for next year at 3.9 million, a little over 3.9 million, an increase, a slight increase in some of our capital projects. For a total of that $105,470,768. And that represents an overall about 7.4% or 6%, 7.4%, 7.5% increase in our Avalorm Tax revenue for the coming year. This slide represents our MSTU millage. As the Board knows, our MSTU millage is spread between support of our unincorporated county parks. And then several years ago, we included, I believe 10 years ago, we included our Stormwater Division of Public Works. Prior to that, Stormwater relied solely on funding within the Public Works Department, which was woefully inadequate to service that need. So what we decided to do was carve out within our MSTU to support Jason's need, both from salaries and an O and M expense in his Stormwater Division. The bulk of his capital funding comes from SRTAX to support capital improvements within Stormwater. But that millage, again, holding the line at .299 mills, again, steady over the last 10 years. Our calculation is that'll generate about 3.9 million, a little over 3.9 million in revenue. Again, we calculate our collection at 95%. So for budgetary purposes, we're estimating $3,751,806 to be collected within that funding source. That exceeds the rollback rate of .2850 mills by .014, I think is what we calculated is the increase. If we were going to maintain the rollback rate and collect the same amount of revenue as last year. Those are the two millages. This is just a graphical representation of the growth, tremendous growth in property values over the last 10 years. It's almost doubled in property value growth over the last 10 years, which has driven the increases in our budget, which support all of the competing needs that we've discussed over the last few weeks with this Board. Just very briefly, this is a graphical representation of your Avalorm, your property tax millage at 3.8308 mills. You'll see we did an increase in the 2017 year and have held the line since then, but you'll see where that millage stacks up against revenue collection. The next slide is your MSTU collections and rate history. Again, this is a graphical representation of the .299 mills that this Board levies and where we collect in way of revenues over the last several years. This last bar graph, again, we like to include this each year. It gives the Board an idea of where we stack up against those counties we benchmark against and our neighboring counties. And as this Board knows, we have made a commitment over the last decade to hold the line on property taxes in Okaloosa County. And are very proud of that. We keep our tax burden low for our residents here in Okaloosa County. There's a number of funding sources that this Board does not tap into, that other counties take advantage of. So we try and keep the mission going of this county, grow that mission as best we can, and do so within the funding source that we have available to us. So very proud of that and wanted to put that in front of the Board. Lastly, I just wanted to touch on the public hearing dates. That's when we'll finalize this budget. Staff, over the next several weeks, based on the Board's guidance today and approval of our millage rates, will put together the final budget documents. We'll have all that prepared in time for our public hearings. The first public hearing is scheduled for September 3rd. That'll be hosted up at our board chambers at the Crest Hue Courthouse. That meeting starts at 5:01. Statutorily, we have to start those meetings at 5 o'clock or after. That's why you see two evening meetings to adopt our budget. The final public hearing, final adoption of the budget, will take place on the 17th of September. That meeting will be held here in our county administration building, again, starting at 5:01 in the evening. Lastly, I just have the DR 420 forms in front of you. These are the forms that we are required to certify. I, as your Budget Officer and County Administrator, sign these documents on behalf of the Board. And they are transmitted to Department of Revenue, Property Appraiser, and all the local offices that are required to receive this documentation. So again, execution of these documents today will hold the line on that millage going forward. Any increase that the Board might contemplate between now and the final hearings would require a unanimous majority of this Board to increase that. You can decrease it, but you cannot increase without a unanimous majority support of the Board. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you. I'm requesting two actions today, and that is approval of the property tax millage at 3.8308 mills. And then followed by approval of the MSTU millage at .299 mills. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Before we accept a motion, I need to suspend this agenda item and open for public comment. If there's anyone from the public desiring to speak, now would be the time of that opportunity. All right, seeing none, we'll move to the Commissioner. Commissioner Ponder?
I need both the one.
Just one.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Boils. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with a "a". Passes unanimously.
A motion second, because we're going to use tax unit rate at .2990 mills.
Motion by Commissioner Ketchel.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Boils. Any further discussion?
Never wait for the third one, second.
All right, seeing none. All in favor signify with a "a". Passes unanimously. You have anything further?
Just thanks to this Board, again, for your guidance and leadership. You give us our marching orders early in the year. We take that on the staff level. Pull this thing together, and it is a huge undertaking to develop a $650 million budget. And thanks to this Board for your guidance and leadership in that regard. That's all I have, sir.
Commissioners, any other input? All right, meeting is adjourned.